All right, I'm gonna call this village board meeting for October 4th, 2021 to order. Roll call, please.
Natalie Frye?
Here.
Phil Williams?
Here.
Phil Rannam?
Here.
Chris Donner?
Here.
Aaron Moran?
Here.
Sam Kaufman?
Here.
Gary Hertzberg?
Here.
Okay, first thing is confirmation of open meeting compliance. Caitlin?
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in the Wanakee Tribune on September 30th. The final agenda was posted to all three village posting places. Wow, posting places on September 30th. And the final agenda and packet were made available online on September 30th.
Okay, thank you. Next we have consent agenda. I'm gonna ask did item four be pulled out, just 'cause I can't load on that one? Do I have to do anything special to that, Brian? Or can I?
Nope.
Uh, no.
So we'll be just looking at one through three right now.
Move approval of items one, two, and three of the consent agenda.
Second by Natalie Frye. Any other comments? Okay, call the question, all in favor say aye.
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 Post, eyes have it. Then we'll do number four. Can I read it?
Sure, and then you just recuse yourself.
Yep. Approved temporary Class B retailers' license application for Wanakee Chamber of Commerce for jump around with One Community Bank tailgate on October 23rd, 2021.
So included in your packet was a request from the Wanakee Chamber of Commerce for a temporary Class B license for the One Community Bank tailgate planned for October 23rd, 2021. They submitted all the necessary documentation and it's been approved and reviewed by the police department. Staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Gary Hertzberg?
Second.
Second by Bill Rannam. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
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 Eyes have it. Okay, next we have public comments. Is there anyone here who would like to make a comment on any item that's on or off the agenda this evening?
I have one slip of paper from Mary Heimbecker at 306 West Third Street.
Go ahead.
Hey, I should've tried to email you guys sooner and I apologize. The Board of Education Annual Meeting is Monday, October 18th at 2021 at 7:00 PM. And I was just going to see if perhaps you could move the village board meeting, have a discussion about it to 5:30 PM so those of us that would like to try to attend both of the meetings could do that timely. Thank you.
Can you repeat the times? Just, I missed those.
Yeah, annual Board of Education meeting is at 7:00 PM on Monday, October 18th. And I was just wondering if you could try to move the village board meeting to 5:30 PM that night. So perhaps the board meeting would get done so we could scurry up to the annual meeting for the school board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a note on that, because we have finance at 5:15 that night. So I'm not sure that that would work. Or even five if we can, because of the budget.
Any other comments? Any other papers?
Nope.
Anybody else in the crowd? Okay, seeing none, let's move on.
Ooh, Chris.
Oh.
Sorry.
Did I look at me? Actually, I have one too.
Oh, you do? You wanna go first?
Yeah, I'll read it. So this came to the village trustees, I don't think, I don't know if you guys all got this or not, I know I did. So this came from Wanakee Neighborhood Connection. Dear Village Trustees, thank you for making a positive impact in our community with the designation of $60,000 of ARPA funding for our neighbor-to-neighbor program. As donors, clients, and volunteers, we collectively have an amazing opportunity to shape the world in which we live and to empower each other. By actively addressing challenges and issues for families right here in Wanakee, together with you, we're able to create practical and effective solutions that strengthen our community. One of our clients recently shared with us how grateful she is to live in a community where she is able to get support from others when she needs it and to give back when she is able to do so. Neighbors helping neighbors, that's the bottom line. That's why we're here and why we appreciate your partnership in this work. Again, thank you for the investment in the heart of our community. With gratitude, Lisa Humanek, Executive Director.
And I wore my Create Wanakee swag today on purpose to really celebrate the work of the committee and to pull off our first Wanakee artisan market. That was at Schumacher Farm on Saturday. Hats off to committee member Natasha Lutz and volunteer, let's see, Rana Neri, who co-chaired the event along with a multitude of different volunteers and 39 different artisan vendors. And we had well over 600 visitors for that particular event. That was pretty spectacular. It was a great day, so hats off to all involved.
Thank you for all those involved. Okay, next under license and permit, discuss and take action on original alcohol beverage license for Wanakee One Stop Inc. Doing Business is Wanakee One Stop.
Included in your packet was a request for an original alcohol license for the BPF here on the corner of Main and Century. The new owners took ownership, I believe, on the 1st of October. In your packet is their request for their Type A beer and liquor license. Staff recommends approval of this original license. It has been to the police department for their review. They also recommend approval.
Board members? Any questions or look for a motion?
I would move approval of license for Wanakee One Stop Doing Businesses, Wanakee One Stop Premises identified at the building on 404 West Main Street, not including the area leased to Dunkin' Donuts. A gate or enclosure securing the wine displayed during non-sale hours with surveillance cameras to be in place to record sales and counter activities. Subject to possession of a current seller's permit, payment of outstanding liquor bills, and payment of all outstanding bills or monies owed to the village.
Motion by Phil Williams?
Second.
Second by Sam Kaufman. Any other comments? Okay, call the question, all in favor say aye.
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 Post, eyes have it. Next under new business, we have discuss and take action on police department squad room remodel to be funded with American Rescue Plan Act fiscal recovery funds.
I'll start it off and then a few questions here to talk about this as well. So back at the July 19th, 2021 meeting, the board gave conceptual approval to the remodel of the squad room. And that amount, the projected amount at that time was $30,000. And the reason it was just conceptual at the time is because they had not gone through the obtaining three bids and that whole process and getting it designed. So now that has been completed. And I'll let Adam just talk a little bit about.
Yeah, it's one of the areas in our police department we've grown out of. And what I mean by that is we don't have any room for any additional staff to have a place to essentially charge their equipment or store their squad equipment that they need to take out every shift. And by doing this, this gives us a little bit of breathing room in that area by creating a smaller place, but still offering them a spot to do other things.
I saw it's sort of a wide range.
Very wide range, yes.
What did we plan for with ARPA funds?
About $30,000 was what was in the, at the July 19th meeting, kind of the budgeted estimate.
Okay, we left it in the budget.
Okay, I do have a question.
Yeah.
Is there, I mean, why was there such a wide range? Do you have an idea? Did you give them specific specs as to materials and everything?
Not so much on the material part that it was used, but as far as what we were looking for from a conceptual drawing, essentially like a locker type system where people would have room with outlets to charge equipment, a place to hang some clothing, whether it be like a rain jacket or their bulletproof vest when they're not working, things like that. So they were all given the same design request, if you will, a table in the middle that we could have a workspace as well. I'm not really sure. The one that was extremely high was all metal, I believe, metal lockers. And it was actually not really the direction we were looking to go. We already have some lockers in our locker room for changing. This was geared differently.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Are there, look for a motion?
I'll move to approve the bid of $26,000 plus from M&amp;M Office and Terrace for Police Department Squad Rule Model Using American Rescue Fund Rescue Plan Act Fiscal Recovery Funds.
I'll second.
Motion by Dr. Rannam, second by Aaron Moran. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
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 Post, eyes have it. Number two, discuss and take action on memorandum of understanding between Village of Wanakee and Wanakee Community School District regarding use of former library site. Brian, are you introducing?
Yeah, I'll introduce some of what we've been doing and then we can tag team, Brian. So obviously this relates to the concept of moving our village hall functions over to the old library. We've been having some ongoing discussion with the school district about some matters related to the title and the property and the way the deeds are established, with the parking being sort of a unique element, the upper parking, we've talked about in the past. One thing, this was a couple of months ago, Chris and I attended the school board meeting and we presented the board with kind of the story of where we've been since we began this process of discussion. We reviewed the test fit design process, the companies we've engaged to do that, and the board action to date. A lot of that was new information for the school board. I think they appreciated the presentation. Afterwards, they met once or perhaps twice and gave the superintendent some guidance on what to do next. And that was for them and their real estate attorney to meet with village staff, and Brian participated in that process to establish the memorandum of understanding, that's before you tonight, to sort of lay the plans for going forward. I think we have a good solution in concept. The school board is meeting a week from tonight to consider the same MOU. And hopefully when we resolve these issues, we can keep on proceeding with, you know, the proverbial green light. So with that, Brian, do you want to walk through what we're trying to address with the MOU?
Sure. I think the best way to probably describe this document, and I appreciate the fact that you got it for the first time this afternoon and that, or this morning, and that's because we were working on it. And so, I mean, I think at a staff level, we're prepared to move forward. Obviously, since you got the document today, if it's something that you need more time with, that's certainly within your discretion. I would characterize this as this is a good effort by both the school district and the village to kind of move forward with a solution. It is, there is a quick claim deed that applies to the upper parking area for the former library site. And it does have some reversionary interest language in the document related to the school district. As you will see in recital E, I'm sorry, recital D, we do anticipate essentially clarifying an issue. Right now, we have a quick claim deed where land went from the school district to the village. That deed made reference to an exhibit that in fact does not exist. And so the issue that we need to confirm and clarify, and we think that we have an understanding based on some meetings we've had with the school district, is something's gonna have to be recorded on our land to confirm exactly what that meant. But, and it creates a reversionary interest and where there's been a little bit of disagreement between the parties, but instead of worrying about the disagreement that we have, we want to focus on moving forward. And I think it's safe to say, based on the discussions that I've seen at the village board level, that the village board has an interest in moving village hall to the former library site. And I think that the school district would like to see the village hall moved to the former library site, because I think they view that municipal use of that land as being good for their land that is immediately adjacent. And so what this document does is effectively acknowledge kind of the process that we've gone through to date in the recitals, including identifying a number of concrete steps that the village has already taken. When you're looking at the different sub paragraphs in recital G of the steps the village has taken to move village hall from its current location to the former library site. Then essentially what we have is four numbered paragraphs. Numbered paragraphs one and four, I would just call standard legal language incorporating the recitals and acknowledging the fact that if we need to in the future, the parties can sit down and in writing modify this agreement. The teeth of the MOU are two and three. And so two is essentially something that acknowledged, you know, basically, hey, you know, village, you said you're gonna move to the former library site. We'd like you to continue to take the steps that you've already identified in the recitals, build on those, and ultimately move to the site. So it says essentially, we will move there within one year, or if we haven't moved there in a year, we're gonna have taken certain steps, and the way that it's defined in the document is 75% completion of the remodeling to get into that former site within a year of when this document gets executed. Now, everybody, I think, has heard, and if you haven't, I'll explain it now, there are many issues that, especially supply chain management issues right now, that can affect remodeling or construction issues. And so one of the things that we talked about, and one of the things that was incorporated here, was force majeure language. Essentially, if there's, you know, some type of circumstance that is beyond the village's control, including supply chain management issues, that prevents us from hitting that 75% threshold or being in there altogether, we get to have a reasonable amount of time to essentially try to hit that 75% threshold. So paragraph two is basically, you've taken these steps already, and the school district, I think, is looking to the village and making sure that the village is gonna continue to take the steps to move into the former library site. I would say that number three is essentially the legal language, and probably the most significant sentence is the last sentence. Neither party, so we've had, you know, we don't need to get into the details of the discussions that we've had regarding the disagreements on the language in the quick claim deed. We want to, I think the school district and the village want to execute an MOU to basically look forward like we've been talking about. We also have to acknowledge that there's the potential that something would come up and all of a sudden, the village can't move to the former library site. In which case, we may essentially be back to this point on the disagreement regarding the parking lot area. And so all section, all section three is saying is nobody's waiving any of their rights, nobody's waiving any of their arguments. We don't really want to argue over this right now, we want to see this happen, but if number two isn't satisfied, then we're gonna be in the position as we sit here today, which may or may not lead to some type of, you know, there's still probably other solutions that we can talk about. This seems like the best one right now. But that's the purpose of paragraph three, nobody's waiving any rights, essentially.
Okay, board members, questions? I mean, the only comment I'd make is in reference to number two, the supply chain problems, I mean, since I work right next to it, the Jimmy Johns has been sitting, looking like it's ready to go, but they can't get any refrigeration units. That's what they've been waiting for. So it's a similar concept to what we're talking about here. If we can't get those things in, it's not like we weren't trying, it's just.
Yeah, I agree. It's a serious problem right now, and it may not necessarily approve over the next six months, six to 12 months.
Okay.
The one thing I would like to add too is, you know, if you are willing to act tonight and if you do approve this agreement, I just, as part of this, like again, the recital D contemplates that we're gonna do a correction instrument. We're gonna figure out what's meant by the reference to exhibit one. I think it would be better if we don't have to bring that back to you. And it's gonna be consistent with the document. I mean, if you want us to bring it back to you, we can. It hasn't been drafted yet. All it's gonna say is basically, in more legal language than this, we have a document that's been recorded, it refers to exhibit one, there was no exhibit one, this is what the parties intended by that quick claim deed.
Another addition, you know that we've been talking with the food pantry about co-location at the facility. That remains a productive conversation with them. The school district is aware of their interest, as are we. Both parties are supportive of the notion of the food pantry locating there, and the food pantry remains engaged and interested. So they've been involved in our preliminary test fit design, so they're seeing plans as well. So that remains a very viable alternative for all of us.
I was just gonna ask about that. Does this mean that both need to move in at the same time or just village hall operation?
Well, I would say this, I don't disagree with anything that Todd has said. Even if you execute this agreement, the school district doesn't necessarily have to let the, I mean, that's a discussion for, I mean, I don't think anybody of us would argue that the food pantry's use constitutes a municipal purpose. And so therefore, there would still need to be a discussion with the food pantry, with the school district on that issue.
Okay.
No matter what you do with this document.
Anything else? Would somebody like to make a motion?
I move we approve the memorandum of understanding between the Village of Wanakee and the Wanakee Community School District regarding use of the former library site, 710 South Street.
Can we add to that motion subject to final review and approval by Todd and by me? Just, my understanding is the school board will take this up next Monday night. If they have a substantive change to the document, we would bring it back to you. But if it's more of an editing or some other type of issue, that would give us the flexibility to make a non-substantive change to the document.
I think that was an extremely small print here and I missed it.
A lot of words, okay. Motion by Phil Williams?
Yes. I'll second.
Seconded by Dr. Rannam. Any other comments, questions? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. A post, eyes have it. Next item is discuss and take action regarding sale of village-owned property and related agreements at 607 Reeve Drive, current location of Country View Apartments.
This is gonna be a tag team. Community Development Director Tim Semen and Brian and I have been working as recently as, this very afternoon, to put together terms of a sale as we've been discussing with the board for the past several months. At administrative level, we're prepared to present with you a set of terms. The, let's see, where was I going with that? And Tim, you have passed out some bullet points regarding the items where there is a little bit of discussion still to be had between the village and Heartland. One thing I note is we did include this for potential closed session. We've come a long way in our discussions. There's really just a point or two that remains sort of open for discussion where we're seeking feedback and direction from the village board. I don't know if, Brian, you or I necessarily have a particularly strong feeling about whether the board should.
I think we can definitely start the discussion in open session. If you guys, if you start asking questions that I think we need to go into closed session, I'll flag it for you. But I mean, I think at least we have the ability to start and open and possibly finish with everything in open session.
So with that, do you want to take it away?
Sure. So starting on page 45 of your packet is the draft acquisition agreement. It's, as Todd had mentioned, I think, we've been here before with you. We've had documents prepared and then there's been updates. And so I think, and I think the point that we've made to Heartland through this process and now, which is made clear in this document, is the affordable housing component is critical to the village board. And so I would say that the first thing that I want to focus your attention on is new language that hasn't changed. I mean, it hasn't changed based on this afternoon's conversation, but it's on the second page of the document, and it's sub paragraphs one and two. I'm sorry, I apologize. It's on the third page and it's section two. So this is the language, and it's somewhat similar to the language that we have in our agreement with Cohen Esri, where we're referring to this land use restriction agreement for low-income housing that has been executed by Heartland and by WEDA. And there's an acknowledgement that the property is subject to these rules right now. And we, as a village board, want to make sure that they continue to be subject to these rules until 2044. And that is the existing lease runs through 2044. And so what we wanted to do is essentially come up with some language that addresses, okay, how is this gonna happen from now until September 30th of 2044? And so that's really the language that's in 2B. And I think where this language came from is after our last board meeting, I believe that Todd and Tim had the ability to sit down with Heartland and say, look, this is a very important issue for the village board. How do we, you know, how can we come up with some language, knowing that the LURA agreement is going away in three years? How can we come up with some language that's gonna satisfy both the village and Heartland? And that's what this language is intended to do. So right now, there are 39 units at the structure that are utilized for the low-income housing requirements of LURA. Those 39 units, even after the LURA agreement goes away, based on this agreement, would continue to be used for that same purpose. And so we came up with a definition, and that's the definition where it talks about does not exceed 80% of the annual median income for Dean County with adjustments for, and I'm not gonna read it, but that goes on. And my understanding is village staff, someone in the, I think it might've been Tim, went and confirmed that it is 39 units that are used for low-income housing right now, and did confirm that when you look at the definition of low-income housing for the Department of Housing and Urban Development, what we have in sub B satisfies that definition. So that's a, sorry, it's a long-winded way of saying, the language is a little bit different from the last draft that you received, but we do believe at a staff level that this is consistent with what the board is looking for. In other words, making sure that through September 30th, 2044, the structure, even if we sell the land, will continue to be used for affordable housing purposes. I guess that's the first thing to highlight, because I know that's probably the main issue that we've talked about to date. For changes to the document, let me just kind of tick off the ones that I think are probably gonna be the easiest. The last one we'll talk about is section 2C. We're gonna, we've had a discussion with Heartland, they raised the issue of, hey, is it really necessary to be, have all these documents, the exhibits recorded with the document? The thought process is this is something that's gonna be recorded on our land for a long time, to the extent that we can make this shorter, that's gonna be better. We've come up with, we don't really need to attach these two exhibits. We can modify the language in the paragraphs in which the exhibits are referenced to effectively incorporate them into the document. And so the first change would just be a few language changes and we pull the exhibits from the document. I'm comfortable with that. I'm certainly willing to answer any questions that you might have.
Maybe just to define those exhibits, one is the, all the details are related to the current WEDA.
Yeah, the LURA agreement itself.
Right. And then the other was the letter back from April when Heartland expressed their interest to make the purchase.
Why would it be important to Heartland to have those exhibits taken out the way they want it done?
Just because anytime somebody, for some reason, somebody's looking at their property, for example, refinancing. And now they're looking at document that if they refinance, that mortgage is gonna be subject to this agreement. One, so there could be potentially some confusion on the LURA agreement. Right now, the LURA agreement is recorded on the land and it's gonna, it's going to be, it's gonna terminate in three years. Well, if we have that document attached to this property use agreement, which is also gonna be recorded, I think there's a bit of a concern for, if all of a sudden, if a mortgage company is looking at this and saying, now wait a second, it looks to me when I read the LURA agreement that it's terminated, but now it's attached to this document as an exhibit, does that mean the LURA agreement still is in effect? And the answer to that question is no, but that's where there could be some type of, there could be some confusion. And so I think the way that for us to deal with this is, we're still gonna have the text referring to the LURA agreement. And we can just, it's got a document number because it's been recorded. And so we can just insert that document number. Instead of having it as an exhibit, we can say the LURA agreement that's been recorded with the Dean County Register of Deeds Office as document XYZ, that is, you know, what we're thinking about when we want this existing affordable housing to continue based on the definitions that we have in section 2B.
Okay, thank you.
So we have another issue, this is, I would say more of a, we have made it abundantly clear to Heartland that it is imperative that for, until September 30th, 2044, that the affordable housing components to the property remain in place. There is a bit of a concern on their part of having to get consents from mortgage companies. And so we have standard language in all our development agreements that say, if there's gonna be a mortgage on the property, then there needs to be a consent. Because our agreement can't be recorded after a mortgage unless we have a consent, because if we're recorded after a mortgage and the property's foreclosed upon, then our agreement goes away. And so what we've talked to them, but at this point, we don't know the order in which documents will be recorded for the closing. How they want to approach it is, they buy the property from us, the warranty deed gets recorded, our property use agreement gets recorded, and then any mortgages get recorded after that, which means that we come before the mortgages. So even if the property's foreclosed upon or if it's sold, our affordable housing components still apply. So they want, ultimately, they want this consent language to come out. We've said we cannot pull that language right now. What we can do though, is we've talked to them about the fact that we may not execute this agreement until the closing itself. And so when we get to that point, and we're working with the title company, and we have assurance, and then we have the ability to dictate to the title company the order in which the documents will get recorded, once we have it in writing that our agreement will be recorded before, right after the warranty deed and after everything else, then we have the ability to pull that language out because we no longer need consents. And so that's where they want to end up. We've told them we can't do it right now, but we can probably do it at the closing once we have more information. And so we just, that's one of the changes that wouldn't come immediately, but would come by closing. just, that's one of the changes that wouldn't come immediately, but would come by closing. We're, at a staff level, we're comfortable with that, but that would be one of the changes to the document.
And that's partly why we would be asking for the board to grant final authority to the village attorney to execute a tweak like that if it's necessary at closing.
Does that sound okay to everybody?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. The last issue is, if you look at page three of your document, we have section 2C. So, when we first started negotiating with the potential buyer, we had certain restrictions that we wanted to place on the property. And as part of the negotiations, it became clear that the affordable housing component was the most important, so some of the other restrictions that we had in there got pulled out. One of them was on the resale of the property. We have, you know, we pulled language from the agreement that we have with the Madison and Main project, and we inserted that. The developer said, wait a second, you guys are, that's overreaching. We're already paying fair market value for the property. We're already agreeing to these affordable housing restrictions. We want you to pull that language out. That language has been pulled out. But, we've also talked about the idea that we have this, this letter that we've received from them back in April, and in part of that letter, they stated they're going to make, if they're able to buy the property, they're going to make certain improvements. And I think, if I understood the discussion correctly, and I'm not going to give anything, I mean, I'm only going to say one thing about closed session, my understanding was the board wanted to make sure that if we sold the property to the buyer, that they followed through on the statements that they made in that letter with respect to the improvements that they would make. So, that's the genesis of this paragraph. It attaches the letter that we received back in April. I would say right now, we've already talked about the fact that we can pull that exhibit, okay? But then, it talks about timing for improvements to be made, establishing a threshold of improvements that need to be made from a monetary standpoint. And then there's a last, there's a last sentence in there that essentially is, if you don't do this, developer, then you're going to have to, there's going to be some type of, you know, quote-unquote liquidated damages provision. Well, when we shared this document with them, they were open to the idea of, okay, yeah, we're going to make improvements. We said we're going to make improvements. We will make the improvements. I think probably for the similar reason that we talked about having the force majeure language in the school district agreement, their thorough process was, but we need, we need some flexibility of when that's going to happen. It can't happen right away. And the thing that they're very opposed to is the last sentence saying, if they don't do it, then they're going to have to pay us some money back. And so, we talked about modifying this paragraph to read, and this is, this is the third bullet in what's before you. It would say, within three years of the execution of this agreement, the developer shall make improvements to the capitalized improvement, so that's the structure that's there now, and the property, generally described as replacing or renovating windows, patio doors, siding, and balconies, and making other exterior and interior improvements. So, where that language is taken from is from the latter. That's the type of things that they said they were going to do. The developer agrees to spend at least $600,000 on the improvements described in the preceding sentence. So, where we're at right now, and if there's anything that you're going to want to go into closed session, and it's probably on this paragraph, if you're comfortable with that rewrite of that paragraph, saying that they're going to get three years to do it, and they agree that they're going to have to spend $600,000 on it, and that's it, then I think that we have an agreement on that paragraph. The issue becomes, okay, what happens if they don't do it? Now, they would be in violation of the agreement. There's no question about that. We would have to get into a debate then with them of what are the consequences of not doing it. That was essentially the purpose of the last sentence that's in the document that is in your packet, is some type of consequence. If you're comfortable with, hey, they've agreed to do it within this period, and they've agreed to spend this amount of money, and I would say, the flip side, there's a practical component to this, is I think they've acknowledged that they do need to make improvements, because they need to keep their business operating. And so, there is, even if you don't have the language in the agreement, I think that you can reasonably say to yourselves, there's a practical component here that says they are going to make these improvements. But that, to me, is kind of the crux of the discussion. You can certainly have it in open session if you want to talk about whether or not you need, whether or not this paragraph is good, and whether or not you need that last sentence. That, I think, though, is where you could go into closed session if you want to have that discussion.
How does everybody feel? Gary, how do you feel right now? Okay?
I'm good with it.
Sam?
I'm sorry. When you say you're good with it, you're good with the new paragraph that I read to you? Okay.
Yes.
Sam?
Okay.
Nyla?
I'm good with it.
Bill?
I think it gives us some protection, yes.
Bill?
Yeah, I'm fine with these two.
So, I'll be the only one that says something, then, it looks like here, but what if we put for the teeth, or whatever, if they don't do their work? Could it be something similar to where we would be able to have access to go in and make improvements that we deem necessary to those total that they'd have to pay?
I think to the extent that you had, possibly when it comes to exterior, I mean, the other thing that I would, I mean, so, yes, there is the potential that we could build something like that in there. I guess in response to also what you're saying, keep in mind, for interior, there's always, I mean, if there's a concern that there's a building code issue, we already have language in the state statutes and the code that require them to make changes. In our village code, to the extent that something is, you know, from an exterior standpoint, is in a certain condition, we have certain standards that are in the village code that we could require them to make the improvements just by the code in addition to the agreement. And with some of that language, and it has to be, admittedly, it has to be pretty far down the line, we already have the right by statute and by our code to go on there and make the improvements and charge the property back. But, I don't necessarily think that's exactly where you're getting at, because that is where property is in really bad condition.
Okay. I'm good with it, then. So, it sounds like we're good. Everybody in agreement? What do you need from us tonight, then?
So, I think the way that the motion is stated is probably just what we need. Let me get to, so the motion is top of page 44 of your packet, and we already have the ability to make these different changes based on the way it's stated, because it gives Todd and I the ability to do that. So, I think you just do the recommended motion.
I'll move to approve the property acquisition agreement between the village and Heartland Wannakee, subject to final review and approval by the village administrator and village chief.
Motion by Erin Moran, second by Nyla Friday. Any other comments?
Can I make one? Like, now, as we proceed with the sale, everything's going to be consistent with this document, so we would not be bringing like the deed or other title documents back to you. We would just proceed at a staff level. Okay.
Okay. Okay. So, we've got a motion to second. Any other comments? Call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it.
Move to adjourn.
Whoa.
Motion by Sam Hoffman to adjourn. He's objecting now. He won't even second it.
I think we're all speechless.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Yes.
Second by Phil Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
I hate to tell you, Dr. Random, you're slowing down.